So.
Oh, that's a new function.
Yeah, that's the new, that's the new protocol on here.
Okay, oh, interesting. Dennis, can you lead us in a pledge of allegiance?
Excuse me?
Can you lead us in the pledge, please?
Definitely. Thank you.
And everybody else could mute.
Please place your right hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dennis, I'd like to welcome everybody to the regular meeting, June 1st of planning commission. Can we get a roll call, please, Annette?
Yes, Commissioner Anderson? Commissioner Carranza?
Here, I was texting Jennifer.
Commissioner McIntyre, I don't see yet. Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson King?
Here.
Chairperson Van den Eyck?
Here.
And Commissioner Hughes is an excused absence, so we have five present at the moment.
Great. Super. So we will move into the public comment portion of our meeting and this portion of the meeting is reserved for anybody who would like to address the planning commission on any item that is not on really matter that is not on the agenda and over which we have some jurisdiction. If you'd like to speak, you're limited to three minutes and please state your name for the record and.
Chairperson, we actually need to do approval of the agenda next.
Sorry about that.
Oh, that's okay.
Yeah, can I get a motion to approve the agenda, please?
I'll make the motion. Yes.
I'll second.
Three, thank you. All right, Annette.
Okay, can you all hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson King?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Carranza?
Yes.
Commissioner McIntyre, don't see her just yet. Chairperson Van den Eyck?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Okay, thank you, Annette. And so we will go ahead and move into our, the public comment portion. If anybody from the public would like to address us, please raise your hand in Zoom or do star six, I believe. Is it star six or star nine?
I believe it's star nine to raise your hand and then if you happen to be muted, star six will unmute you if you're on the.
So if anybody in the attendees would like to make any comments of any item that's not on our current agenda, if you could raise your hand. Okay, I don't see any. So we'll go ahead and move to our consent calendar. Can I get a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So moved.
Jason, can I get a second?
I'll second.
Yeah, Victoria. And then can we get a roll call now?
Yes, Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Carranza?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson King?
Yes.
Chairperson Van den Eyck?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Okay, it doesn't look like we have any planning commissioner business or community development staff report, so we will move into the public hearing.
I'm sorry, Jeff, I just want to say, oh, never mind, someone put their hand up and they put it down, so never mind. Sorry. Oh, wait, it's backup.
Okay, Mr. Kelly, do you have a comment on our public comment portion?
Sorry, I'm not sure if this is the right time to ask this. Is it okay for me to ask questions right now?
It depends on if it's, if it's something that's on the agenda, we'll, we'll get to that. But if it's something that's not on the agenda, then, then yes.
Oh. Okay, um, sorry. I'll wait.
Okay, so it is for the agenda. Okay, yeah, if you could just wait and then we'll, we'll invite you to come speak again. Okay, then we will move into our public hearing. We'll first, after the staff report, we will open it up for the public hearing and invite the applicant or the applicants representative to make any comments. Members of the public will then be invited to provide. You can provide anything that you'd like. And we'll first move to ex parte and let's see, I gotta expand my list here so we can see. Jason, do you have any ex parte on this item?
No ex parte.
Dennis?
I'd be on reading the letter from Mr. Huffman and then we heard this item as a design review committee last week or the week before.
Tori?
Uh, no ex parte.
Okay, Victoria?
No.
Okay, and I did see this when it came before the DRC a couple of weeks ago. So good, then we'll go ahead and we'll move into our staff report. Just give your staff report today. Kelly?
Yep, I've got that for you. So good evening, commissioners. The project before us is the Del Rio Ranch Project. It occupies the former Walmart site at the intersection of Del Rio Road and El Camino Real. It's about twenty-six point two acres in size, currently zoned commercial retail and multifamily high density. A little bit of site history for those who don't know, there was a specific plan approved on the project site as well as some surrounding sites in 2012. On this particular parcel, it did include a large scale retail store, which was the Walmart location. It also included three acres of high density residential land and two commercial pads for either retail restaurant development or some other use that was allowed in the commercial retail zone at that time. The specific plan was updated recently in 2020. We did modify the list of allowable uses once Walmart officially pulled out of the site. The uses that we added into the specific plan are consistent with the underlying zoning and the vision for the Del Rio area and included a couple modifications specific to the project site location. And then we did remove Walmart's specific information from the specific plan. We then had an application for the Del Rio Ranch Project, which was authorized to proceed by the city council in March of 2021, which included moving the residentially zoned portion of the property with a slight increase in size. It included entertainment based commercial centers with some commercial presence at the corner, an amphitheater and a parking garage. And it also included a tourist resort that had a hotel, RV park and some glamping spaces. So tonight we're looking at general plan and zoning map amendments to adjust the residentially zoned portion of the property. We're also looking at a specific plan amendment related to circulation, the public road location and the adjustment to the residential portion of the site. And in addition, we're looking at conditional use permits to create a master plan of development on the site and also allow some conditionally allowed uses. This one's a little bit unique. It's a large project site area and so this master plan of development will be a tiered master plan of development. And we will come back for some adjustments to that master plan of development with each phase of development so that we can have greater detail at that time. So the proposed project includes 3.6 acres of residentially zoned land. The residentially zoned land is proposed to be located, what would this be, the eastern portion of the site adjacent to Rio Rita Road. There's also approximately 30,000 square feet of entertainment center located directly on the corner of Del Rio Road and El Camino Real. There is an attached parking structure garage to that entertainment center, which will allow for increased walkability throughout the project site and limited surface level parking lots. In addition, there's proposed to be a conference center along Del Rio Road, which would allow for some events to happen in that location. There's also some retail and residential condos located along El Camino Real to give commercial presence along that street frontage with some surface level parking lots for adjacent parking opportunities. The applicants also envision a hotel to be central to the site as well as an open air amphitheater with some potential hotel units lining the rear of the amphitheater as well. The blue portion of the site here is proposed for the RV lodging resorts, so these would be approximately 60 RV spaces here. And then the surrounding green areas here would allow for some glamping style opportunities, which would be fixed cabins, potentially some airstream trailers, some old VW buses, things of that nature to create an experience based glamping facility. So as I mentioned, it is a tiered approval process. This is an overarching master plan of development that shows general locations for land uses and some development standards at a higher level. And then the applicants will be required to come back for a conditional use permit to finalize the master plan of development for each phase in greater detail. That CUP would be required for the RV resort, the commercial area, the amphitheater and the conference center. And then the multifamily residential consistent with the original Del Rio Road specific plan would require DRC review before moving forward to ensure that all development standards have been met. So this is a map of the current and proposed zoning and general plan designations. You can see that a majority of the site remains commercial retail zoning and then the smaller portion is for the residential area. In terms of the specific plan amendments, we did need to make changes to the circulation diagram. The original public road, if you can see my mouse, was in this location here and it connected the properties to the south. The applicants are currently proposing the public dedicated road to separate the residentially zoned portion from the commercially zoned portion and create through traffic that aligns with the BISPO road for future residential development to the south. Part of their residential or their circulation plan also does maintain the connection to El Camino Real, but creates a secondary connection at that location and becomes the main connection for the RV resort. In terms of the conditional use permit, as I had stated previously, this is an overarching master plan of development for the design concept and the location of the land uses. And it also includes the approval of conditionally allowed uses to ensure that the applicant's proposal can move forward on the site. That includes the conference center, the mixed use buildings and the RV resort. In terms of the phasing, there is a phasing plan associated with the development as related to us from the applicants early on. So phase one does include the RV resort portion and may include the glamping sites as well in addition to some of the potential boxcar hotel units behind the amphitheater site. Phase two would include the commercial center, including the entertainment and mixed use buildings. Phase three would be the multifamily residential portion of the site. And then the conference facility hotel and amphitheater would come at any point in time really in development, but is envisioned to come a little later when they have an operator or see a demand for those types of uses. I did want to note at this time that the applicant has also requested a temporary use phase to include some RV parking at the corner of Del Rio and El Camino Real and installation of some of the glamping sites with some temporary restroom and shower facilities and temporary utilities and, and road grading at that time. Staff is not recommending a temporary use phase. There are some municipal code issues with establishing a temporary use that's intended for a longer period of time than just a few weekends like an event would be. And there's sort of some precedent setting in terms of establishing temporary uses of a site prior to its formal development. However, I know the applicants do have a presentation that includes the temporary use phase of the site and we can talk about that more later if you have questions. So this is the overall site plan of the development. You can see some internal circulation, traffic analysis has been prepared. All of these intersections off of the main streets have been looked at for safety. The intersection at El Camino Real and this entrance here, which aligns with the service entrance to the Mission Oaks retail center will be a signalized intersection consistent with a specific plan requirements. Abyssal Road will be a new public road that the city will accept for maintenance and that will connect to future projects to the south. There is currently an existing development called the Emerald Bridge Development that's under construction just to the south of this project, a few parcels. That does include another leg of the public road and so eventually this public road will connect with that one to provide for some increased circulation through that residential area. In terms of the design theme, this is the requirement of the specific plan, which requires a contemporary agrarian style design theme. Some of the features called out in the specific plan for inclusion in buildings in the area are gable and shed roof elements, vertical elements at corners and entry points, some earth toned colors, some varied materials such as wood, metal, concrete and glass, large window openings, geometric forms, some layered facade elements. This is an example picture from the specific plan of how those pieces come together. So this is the preliminary proposed commercial design. It is a conceptual level design at this point and again, the commercial area will have to come back when they are closer to construction document development for an additional review of site design and architectural design. These are the design theme features that the applicant has proposed and it is consistent with the specific plan. Their design concept includes shed roof features, clear story in the conference center, mix of wood, concrete, metal and glass as required by the specific plan. There are some conditions added to add some vertical accent features and the inclusion of a vertical medical, metal sighting when they come back for their final CUP. This is the, some images of the glamping concept that they're proposing, so they do have different forms of cabins. They are proposing to create two onsite ponds that would allow for sort of this waterside cabin feature to be added. They're also looking at sort of vintage VW buses and some onsite cabins as well as airstream trailers. The project does include some height exceptions. There were some height exceptions already written into the specific plan. However, some of the roof forms in the commercial center on the corner of Del Rio and El Camino Real do exceed that. And so the specific plan has been amended to allow for that additional height for the roof features to create some variety throughout the site. It's important to note that the site is fairly decently sloped. There's about 100 foot elevation difference between Del Rio and El Camino Real and the Rio Rita Road up at the, the top corner. And so the applicants are utilizing the topography of the site for their uses, whereas Walmart had a large graded pad that required about a 60 foot retaining wall. The applicants are trying to work with the topography of the site and keep existing trees so that their impact on the surrounding neighborhood remains low. And this is their preliminary landscape concept. So again, with each phase, they will be coming back with a more detailed concept. But this concept does include street trees and ample landscaping throughout the public spaces and around the RV and glamping sites. It also includes some screening concept for the RV pads to show how that terrorist RV section can be, can be screened from El Camino Real. So the recommendation tonight is that the planning commission adopt the draft resolution recommending that the city council approve the project features and conceptual design concept to move forward. It would include the general plan and zoning map amendments as well as the specific plan amendment for the Del Rio Ranch Project. And that does conclude staff's presentation. I'm available for questions and I also is prepared a presentation to share with you as well.
Okay. Thank you, Kelly. Do we have any questions of staff at this moment? Victoria?
Yeah, I guess for Kelly. So I seem to remember as a resident who was newly coming into Tascadale when the Walmart project was being put on the table, something about mitigating and looking at road improvements on Del Rio. Am I, am I correct on that one? And was that any consideration for this project as well?
Yeah, so with our amendment to the specific plan in 2020, we actually concurrently adopted a plan line setback for El Camino Real and Del Rio Road. Part of that was to eliminate the roundabout concept that was a mitigation measure as part of the Walmart development. And we redid the traffic analysis for a non Walmart intense use and determined at that point that we could modify the intersection to just have signals and some additional turn lanes added. So this project will be required to build out their frontage improvements consistent with the adopted plan line setback, which does include widening of Del Rio Road, the inclusion of some turn pockets in certain locations. There's also widening of El Camino Real required to add some additional lanes and then the signal at El Camino Real and the Mission Oaks intersection.
And in that plan to widen the roads and do some restriping obviously for additional lanes, is there going to be any bike lanes added?
I know for certain that there are bike lanes required along El Camino Real. Not know immediately off the top of my head if there were also bike lanes on Del Rio Road.
Okay.
All right, Dennis?
Yeah, thank you. Um, there, in this package that we received, there was a transportation impact study that was included. When we met at, as the development review committee, we talked a little bit about the intersection of, of Bispo Road and Del Rio Road and concerns that at maybe some, at some point during activities that circulation may spill that way versus going through El Camino Real. And we had concerns about spillover into the neighborhood. When I look at the transportation study, I'm not seeing anything that discusses that particular intersection in the report. Everything is from El Camino Real towards the freeway. Is is that's, I guess it's still, I think it's a concern. Has, was there any discussion with the applicants on that at all?
So one of the biggest concerns with the location of the road aligning with Abyssal Road is site distance. Exiting the road and turning left onto Del Rio Road, there's kind of right now a mounded area off to the right between the proposed road and Rio Rita Road as well as a curve that goes back. So the traffic engineer did look at that and believes that the site can be graded back to allow for adequate site distance based on the design speed of Del Rio Road. So currently there is not a proposal for any restrictions unless the site distance can't be obtained through grading. As a side note, we see this road as being, you know, kind of a collector road for adjacent residential development as the city grows and develops, develops in that way. We do know that San Benito School is located down Del Rio and so we definitely want residents to have the opportunity to be able to turn right off of Del Rio Road, off of Abyssal Road onto Del Rio as they will be residents and integrated sort of into our city. We anticipate that most RVs will be exiting onto El Camino because that's a signalized intersection and has some better turning radiuses. We also anticipate with the use permit for the RV resort to look a little bit more closely at traffic circulation. And I would anticipate that they provide a map about circulation through the project site and be encouraging of RVs to use that El Camino Real entrance.
And I'll kind of note as a, in devil's advocate or as a issue of improving site distance, since everyone, where I live, I know this for fact that everyone is a race car driver. And the farther that some, someone can see horizontally, the faster they're going to go because they can see farther. So that is kind of the double edged sword of improving site distances is that you'll also automatically increase speeds just because of that fact. So I just want to note that. There's a recommendation in this, in the report also that there be fair share contribution to the improvements in the area has, is a new study going to be done to determine what fair share is going to mean? Or is there an existing study that establishes what that amount is at this point?
We do have an existing study that was done as part of the 2020 update to the specific plan. So we did work with our sort of Nexus fee consultants to determine what the per trip fee would be for the entire specific plan area. And so we do have that number currently available.
And that then covers all the projected improvements that are discussed within the transportation study.
Somewhat. The frontage improvements along each portion of the specific plan parcel frontages are just considered to be frontage improvements. And then so those costs will be borne by the development that touches those frontages. What the reimbursable costs are, are the improvements that are not really along anybody's frontage. So it's some of the signal timing and interloop systems as well as a dedicated right turn lane from Del Rio Road onto the northbound 101 freeway entrance. So those improvements are the ones captured by the fair share fees.
Okay, on the height exception, this is just for information, I guess. When we discussed it at the DRC, was not the height exception compared to the hotel kitty corner to the project as it either being that height or somewhat similar to that. Is that still the case?
Yes, that's correct. On the highest point of the entertainment center would be at about the same height as the hotel, potentially a little bit less than one of their tower features, the height of the main hotel building.
We have kind of a weird policy with respect to highway frontage signing, signs. And it seems to me that it's pretty specific that it limits it to properties that are along the highway corridor. But I'm, you know, there are other cases in which highway signs have been shared with other businesses that are not necessarily located on the highway. I can think of the 76 gas station on Elk, on Highway 41 that also displays an A and W sign. And then I think on opposite side of the street where Chevron and McDonald's is. And then, and I don't quite understand how the, with the Home Depot location, how that we have that huge monument sign there. But it seems like businesses are being included within that. Is there going to, has there been any discussion about signage for attracting people off the highway to this, to the project?
There has been a little bit of discussion. The previous, the original specific plan did include some provisions for some signage on the hotel property, which is also part of the Del Rio Road specific plan. Some of that language was amended in our 2020 revisions because it kind of allowed every single building and use within the specific plan an opportunity for signage, which would have gotten a little bit out of control based on the size of these properties and how many businesses they could accommodate. It does still remain an option if they want to negotiate some signage on that property. We would allow a sort of specific plan area sign to be on the freeway property that is included in the specific plan, but there's no current plans for that.
Lastly, in the one letter that I read for Mr. Huffman, who was representing the shopping center across the street towards the west, discussed one of their concerns that they, first of all, they, they support the project very strongly and they are supportive of the signalized intersection that's common with their property. But they did express some comments about phasing of uses along with the parking and to make sure that parking was going to be covered adequately within the project site versus spilling out. Anything that you could provide on that?
So we do have a condition of approval that all phases meet their code required parking requirements for each phase. So I think that kind of covers that parking concern.
Okay, thank you.
Tori, Jason, do you have any questions for staff? Tori?
Um, so I see that the Abyssal Road has a future connection. Is there a timeline on when that would be made, done?
Sure. So currently with the Emerald Bridge Project, they're sort of the last leg of the connection down to El Camino. And then there's the wide gap in between. We anticipate that this might be an area that we look at as part of our citywide general plan of. We anticipate that this might be an area that we look at as part of our citywide general plan update for increasing residential density. Right now, those parcels are residential suburban, which are two and a half to 10 acre minimum lot size per house. So based on that anticipation and some requests that we've already received for general plan amendments in that area. We do anticipate that road to eventually go through those multifamily development parcels potentially, and then hook down to Emerald Bridge. So we anticipate the citywide general plan update to hopefully be complete, you know, in a 24 monthish timeframe. But we also currently have some anticipated property owners that are anticipating that development and working on some conceptual plans at this time.
Okay. And then my other question was that, do we have any idea how many of the oak trees that they will be removing from the property? Or will we get more details on that later as they apply for each?
Yeah, we will get more details as they apply for each phase, but I think the last page of their submitted design package, which is probably very small, if you have a printed out version in your staff report. Did note the trees they anticipate on saving and the trees they anticipate to remove. There are definitely more removals than than saved trees. Just because of the scope of the project and the size of the site and the nature of commercial development. We do know that a lot of the trees shown in the green area, they are hoping to retain. So throughout the glamping sites and around the amphitheater, they're hoping to retain those trees. And so they are sensitive to that issue. And there's a few beautiful trees on the site that the the hope would be to maintain those trees.
Okay, cool. And the the ponds that they want to put in. How does that affect the city's water? I mean, do they just pay for that to maintain and that's just part of the city water? Or do we have regulations around making ponds?
We don't currently have any regulations around making ponds. Obviously, there they can be somewhat of a water intensive feature due to evaporation during our hot summer months. Obviously, the water to maintain those ponds as full ponds, the cost of that would be borne by the developers. Certainly, you know, there could be conditions added that we look at, you know, using site recycled water to fill the ponds and and any irrigation that we might be able to do off of that. But currently, we don't have any municipal code regulations on ponds.
Because I mean, I kind of like the idea. I just wonder how appropriate is for, like you said, I mean, we're in a drought and that just seems like a lot of water. So I was just curious. I think that's all my questions for now.
Okay, thanks. Jason?
Oh, yeah, I I think this looks like a fantastic project. It's very well done. I like the the routing. I did have a question. Is is glamping a technical term?
Um, sure.
Other parameters for glamping. I mean, can I?
So.
Emergency service pathways. Obviously, this has got the potential of a lot of people in one place at one time. And I see that it's got a lot of great routes. But are there additional emergency service routes that are planned for this that I don't see? In case, you know.
Sure. I'm gonna say, I guess, not necessarily. Our fire department has reviewed the plans and they believe that all of the access is sufficient. With the exception of behind the amphitheater, they are requesting and we've conditioned them to have some additional vehicular access behind amphitheater and sort of boxcar hotel areas. So those details still have not been fully worked out yet. But in terms of the main road circulation, the fire department feels pretty comfortable with the width of pavement and then the opportunities for multiple access points throughout the site.
Okay, good. And then one last question. Will the ponds have fish?
Well, that's a good question for the applicant. I don't know.
All right, that's it. Thank you.
Kelly, on the retail condos, where's gonna be, where will the condo parking be? I see there's a lot. Will there be designated spots in these parking lots for the condo use?
Um, I I believe that's the current plan. We've also added a condition to allow it to be a little bit more flexible as the plans develop. What we've added is sort of a condition for a parking management plan that comes along with that that would kind of tell us how they're going to regulate residential parking versus commercial parking to kind of make sure that it all makes sense. And gives residents some opportunity for adjacent parking, but also leaves a majority of the adjacent parking for some of those commercial retail uses. So that hasn't quite been flushed out yet, but we anticipate a parking management plan to sort of help us lead the right solution.
And hence the reason for having to come back to DRC and for a use permit on some of these topics because some of these fine details are still yet to yet to come along.
Okay, great. Any other questions for staff? Then we'll go ahead and open the public hearing and invite the applicant or applicants representative to give their presentation at this time.
And if the applicant wouldn't mind raising their hand, I'll go ahead and I can allow you to even share your screen. Looks like we have Ted Lawton.
Hello, good evening. Is my screen visible? Do we know?
Yes.
Very good. Let me press play here. Oh, hold on, jumped ahead. All right. Good evening, planning commissioners, city staff and general public. Thank you for your time this evening and allowing us to share our very special Del Rio Ranch project with all of you. For the record, I'm Ted Lawton from Cal Coastal Communities. We're a local family owned real estate company. And I think it's important to share that a large portion of our team live, work and own businesses here in Atascadero in the North County. And sitting with me, I do have Jennifer Kim and I have Jack Phelan, our other partners. So they're they're here in the room if you have any questions going forward. Also, I want to share that we are focused on creating projects that complement the city of Atascadero's economic development goals and initiatives. And we are fortunate that the big box Walmart project was not developed as it would have graded the entire site down 75 up to 100 feet in certain areas. It would have removed all of the original old heritage oak trees. It would have created a larger traffic impact on the surrounding areas and neighborhoods. And it already allowed for RV parking, overnight parking in their six acre parking lot for free. Meaning there would have been no TOT benefit to the city. It was approximately 118 square feet of commercial retail space. I'm going to move on. It is very rare to be a part of a project like Del Rio Ranch because of its ability to transform a city like Atascadero. In the industry, we call projects like these city makers as they can truly anchor a city and give a city a real sense of identity and character. Our project is 100% focused on place making and experience, which we believe is in perfect alignment with Atascadero's goals for future development and growth. As we all know, the big box store, commercial retail of the past is no is no longer a viable option for the future. So what cities and developers have discovered is that these old obsolescent properties and lots can be revitalized by adding a vibrant mixed use indoor outdoor focus on experience, activities, quality of life. And they're finding they are now wildly successful. The point is that the retail commercial of the future looks a lot more like an indoor outdoor farmer's market full of fun activities rather than a large commercial strip mall or big box store. This next slide illustrates a small excerpt from the multiple pages of deed restrictions placed on the property by Walmart. These deed restrictions presented enormous challenge for our team as it would be for any other interested development company. However, because of the city council's understanding of what Atascadero needs are for the future, we were successful in getting our project approved by Walmart's legal team. The city council authorization to proceed on March 23rd and again at the DRC on May 13th. So Del Rio Ranch, Del Rio Ranch will be a premier commercial resort recreation destination for both local and outside of the area guests because of the incredible location and COVID friendly project design. The Del Rio Ranch will be the ideal setting for creating fun filled memorable experiences designed around a fun, safe family atmosphere. However, this project comes with a high price tag. This project we are projecting will cost around $150 million. This is a challenge for our commercial lenders to finance based on the size and the financial impacts of the pandemic. This has required our lender to create a very strategic approach to financing of the project and phases of the project. The key to successfully acquiring commercial financing in the current pandemic, post pandemic environment is tied to the project's ability to produce income in each of the project phases through final completion. So a project of this size and magnitude will need to be broken down into very distinct phases. We see those as being the four phases. Kelly had already presented in her presentation. Phase one, day one means that upon city council approval, hopefully on June 22nd, we will start the site cleanup and beautification process. This means on June 23rd, which will will include removal of existing litter, old car parts, dead trees, old foundations and other debris on the property. We will also be installing new landscaping along the frontages of Del Rio Road in El Camino. We will initiate our tree care and maintenance program to preserve all of the old original heritage oaks on the property and install our temporary facilities, including restrooms, a project office, a security station, and will also be establishing our equipment and material staging areas as well as allowing for some small recreational temporary interim lodging use to start the TOT. This temporary use will will all be on wheels and non permanent, making it easy to relocate or remove as needed. And should and will only last until our phase, our phase one permanent permits have been received within hopefully a 12 month window or sooner. And basically, this next slide gives an idea on a satellite image of what that could look like. It's the areas in green that we're proposing for some interim use. This is a phasing tentative map. Again, the area for the lodging doesn't necessarily need to occur on Del Rio and El Camino. We just located there because it was the easiest and flattest portion of the project. You know, if the city would require us to relocate in a different section of the property, we'd be more than happy to accommodate that. But I think what's really key is with the interim use, all of the support that we're giving it in terms of a check in office, a security shack, a bathhouse, restroom facilities. Here's an example of an ADA compliant restroom facility. Also a portable dump station, interim privacy screens, interim landscaping. You know, fully enclosed trash enclosures, again, screening, stabilized entrances and roads, picking tables, fire pits, Adirondack chairs, walking paths, and kind of my favorite are the pop up vendors which you see in the bottom right hand corner. And here's another example of what what a based DG road could look like. It could be very beautiful. It's what we plan to do. And then also the screening, we'd love to see some kind of screening along Del Rio.
I've lost connection. Does anyone else?
The the property.
Oh, there we go. We lost you for a minute.
Do we, do we know?
About 15 seconds worth of speech, maybe or so.
Screening along Del Rio Road.
Okay, right. So the screening along Del Rio Road, we we see can be a very beautiful and you know, a very key marketing piece to the overall success of the project, showing what's to come to get community interest in the project as they pass by, which is shown by these kind of images to the to the top and bottom corners. Did I mention the DG base pass, how they can be very, very beautiful and aesthetically pleasing? Okay, very good. All right, moving on, the interim use we're seeing is a non permanent kind of grass and gravel kind of mixture of what what we're showing here. And then for us, we see phase two, you'd like it to begin in June of 2022 by building the
We lost you again, Ted.
Uh oh, Ted's still out. Let's just pause here for a moment. Jack or Jenny, are you able to weigh in? For for Ted on this?
This was supposed to be Jeff's problem.
Yeah, this happens sometimes. Okay. Give a moment to reset. Well. Kelly, do you have Ted's number?
Looks like he's.
Yes, I'm I'm back. Can you hear me?
Oh, yes, yes, great.
Okay, my apologies. We're realizing that there's a little bit of a bandwidth issue with other people kind of logging in. So we've had everybody shut down their computers. My apologies. What I was saying was that our permanent uses, commercial uses will be fully available, open and operational once phase two is complete. Those uses. It's pausing again. Look like this in a more detailed sense based on the tentative map. Everything in red. It will include the the outdoor open space amenities such as bocce and pickleball, outdoor bowling, you know, cornhole, maybe some frisbee golf. The the condo over retail will also be completed along El Camino to look like this. We also have a focus on food. We'd like to have lots of food opportunity within the retail underneath the condos to help support the lodging use and also provide more amenities to the northern Del Rio part of Atascadero. And then we also want to see a focus on craft beverages, organic winery, micro breweries, craft cider house, coffee roaster cafe, a fresh or organic juice bar, micro distillery, Bucha House. And then the final RV lodging, the permanent lodging should look a lot more like this with permanent pads and all the hookups as well. Moving on to our open space portion of the project, we see lodging happening within the opening, within the open space such as water bungalows, which are located at the far west southern corner of the property. Yes, we can use recycled water. There'll be plenty of it. There will be lots of gray water. And we love the idea of stocking the pond with fish. We think it'd be awesome to have a little a little trout farm or something or bass, you know, where you come with your kids and you can drop a line off off your bungalow. And it, you know, have share that experience. Next is we we want to see this vintage RV camp camper village, if you will, that would happen towards the center of the project, kind of located in that red shaded area. I think there's a lot of people that are nostalgic for the old vintage VWs. And would love to come back and kind of relive their their early their early days and and share it with their family as well. The glamp ground, yes, it's kind of, it's like a little cabin, if you will. And they will be located to the the east. And they will be located to the east, southern east portion of the property highlighted in yellow. And they'll be clustered more like this. We don't see them, you know, we want them to be clustered in a way where there's still privacy for each. Of the specific, you know, people staying. Also, we see the Airstream City happening towards the center of the project, highlighted in green, kind of above the amphitheater, if you will. These are very popular now. I think there's something similar going across the street on the other side of the highway from, from Del Rio. Uh, the Boxcar Hotel, this is one of my favorites. We see this as a very, very creative use happening above the amphitheater. And could act as like a box seat, if you will, to any of the shows or performances. And we think that people are going to really enjoy that location because of, because of that opportunity. Also, the entertainment center will be built. We're going to have this 30,000 square foot entertainment center. We'll have this indoor-outdoor relationship will spill out onto the plaza. It will include, you know, a modern bowling alley, digital bowling. Include the billiards, the arcade, also the music rooms and the virtual golf. That's a big thing these days. But really this is the focus of creating that fun, safe family environment for everyone to come and enjoy themselves. Which, which currently North County is, it really needs. Um, and this is the outside of the entertainment center. The concept for it is kind of the upper left corner picture. And then you have the renderings below. Obviously the renderings don't do it justice. It will be very aesthetically appealing when it's, when it's built. Next we move into phase three of the project. And you know, here on phase three, we see this starting sometime in December of 2023. It'll create that residential buffer along the top of Del Rio Ranch. You know, that'll provide that visual and geographic sound and light buffer for the existing residential neighborhoods to the east and northeast Del Rio Ranch. We want this done prior to starting our larger, more centralized commercial construction for obvious reasons. And this is kind of what the tentative map would look like, something similar to this. And then here's just more conceptual kind of imagery showing we're going for that agrarian kind of farmhouse style that everybody loves these days. And then moving on to phase four, and really what we want to do is just provide a little more context. You know, to Kelly's presentation regarding the phases. This phase will be the construction of the hotel, the commercial center, the parking structure, and then those final site improvements. The tentative map would show this, the areas highlighted in blue. That's where we're proposing to do that portion of development. Hold on. We are, it jumped on me. Okay. And so a part of that is this conference center. We love the conference center concept that has the idea of this, all the walls are mobile. So they open, they're operable, so they open to the outdoors. So you have this, you know, outdoor, indoor-outdoor relationship that's more COVID friendly for events in the future. Um, and then also the, the conference center can be broken into smaller sections or areas or breakout areas, if you will. It'd be perfect for weddings, guest speakers, for trainings, you know, trade shows and that sort of thing. Currently there really isn't anything like this in North County. I think the closest thing is, is the fairgrounds of Paso. And then next is the outdoor amphitheater. Here we see this seating up to 300 attendees. It will obviously comply with all the noise ordinance with the city. It won't operate, it'll operate in between the hours of 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM. And then if there was ever a performance that went over 10:00 PM, there'd have to be an individual, you know, temporary permit issued for that. We're currently working with our sound engineer for the, the, the sound mitigation measures and design. One of the key ones we see is that the sound system will have the noise measures already programmed in the software. So that it will never go above the, the recommended limits. The parking structure facade will need to match the kind of a similar facade to the retail component along El Camino. So that way it really disguises that parking structure. You know, there's, there's nothing uglier than a parking structure that, that nobody really took the time to, to put some kind of design elements. And you know, to add to it. So we want to make sure that it's, it's visually appealing on Del Rio as well. The boutique hotel will also carry the same Del Rio specific plan, design requirements with wood components. You know, shed roofs, gable roofs, also having, you know, large glass, you know, a framed glass storefront component. And then we'll have a pool as well. And you know, something that we studied was the 2019, 2021 city budget. And really in the budget, we found this area that, uh, you know, I think it was in the city manager's report. That discussed what the long-term economic development goals were for the city of Atascadero. And really what was emphasized was leveraging this place making in the commercial areas. And so looking at, you know, nine out of the 10 overall economic goals, we believed our project really supports all of them. Except for examining the future uses of the city-owned lots to best facilitate vibrant scenes downtown. Otherwise, I think we do a really good job. This project does a really good job of helping support the economic initiatives that were laid out in the budget. Additionally, we are focused on the TOT aspect of the project. You know, we believe that the TOT aspect of the project is a huge money generator and income supporter revenue for the city. If you look, if you look at the city's budget, it shows between 2019 and 2020 and then 2021. That the city was expecting to receive 1.4 to 1.6 million dollars in TOT. You know, uh, from all of the, you know, local hotels and transit lodging. Remember that number kind of keeping in your mind as a baseline as we kind of move to the next slide. Additionally, we took a look at how does the city of Atascadero compare to other cities, specifically focusing on sales tax and TOT. So the little red circle kind of indicates what that section is out of the overall city revenue. As compared to the city of Pismo Beach. Why is Pismo Beach doing so well? They've got great sales tax revenue and great TOT revenue. So for us, it's really important that we provide something that's going to help the city in this area. So we did the projections and we show that this project alone should more than double the city's TOT revenue. Uh, upwards of 1.5 million dollars. In addition, we studied the measure D, sales tax initiative. We, we projected out what sales tax we are looking to generate from the site. And we, we see that as being over $400,000 in additional sales tax. So what are the direct, you know, economic benefits? For one, there's a city maker project. For two, we believe this project will generate 350 to 400 new jobs and support those jobs. As well as create over 1.5 million dollars in new TOT with over $400,000 in new sales tax revenue. For a combined estimate of two point or $2 million of new revenue to the city. It'll create new tourism, serving attraction for the city. It'll support that, that sales tax measure D and also support the Atascadero Tourism Serving District as well. Again, generating over $2 million in new revenue to the city, which is about 20% of the overall budget. If I'm not mistaken, or sorry, 10% of the overall budget, if I'm not mistaken. And for us to think that a project, one project can do that is really incredible. So next we kind of want to move on, move on to the interim use request. You know, Kelly did briefly mention it. And for us, I think it's important to review that, you know, we're proposing this, this interim use that we're proposing. Is intentionally designed to be non-permanent and can, it can be relocated or removed, you know, same day. As phase two of the project, sorry, as phase one of the project is approved and permitted, this is going to take time for that. Um, also the interim use is a major requirement from our lender. Without it, our project will become impossible to finance given today's post pandemic environment. As such, we kindly ask the planning commission to consider one of the two options. One would be to approve our request for the interim use this evening. With the condition that we work with the city planning department on developing, you know, further requirements and further study. On the conditions to allow it. Or two, approve the project with the issue of, of the interim use to be deferred to city council for their review and/or approval. Please note that if the project planning commission approval is continued for another planning commission hearing. It will cause us to miss our escrow window with Walmart and put basically a nail in the coffin of this project. As we're scheduled to close at the end of June. And finally, you know, so there, there's our request, options one, options two. You know, maybe you guys can be creative and come up with another option. That's what we're suggesting. We found a great case study. This is at Tobin James Winery in Paso Robles. And so we thought this was a great case study because of the example of the RV lodging. You know, that's occurring on a two acre dirt lot across from Tobin James Winery. Which is approximately the same size of interim use lodging we are proposing. The city of Paso Robles allows this use. Please keep in mind, this is 100% dry camping without any hookups, without any temporary power, without temporary water. Or firewater, without any other onsite bathrooms, without any security. And without any check-in area or even a swept stabilized entrance. Uh, we believe this example shows that even a dry camping option can be successful. And other cities have found a way to work with their local businesses to support their business operations. The Del Rio Ranch project is much too important to our families, our local community and to the city of Atascadero. Not find a way to work together and ensure this project is fully supported and successful. And here's what the actual onsite lodging looks like. You can see there's no stabilized, you know, entrance. There's really no stabilized access or circulation. We're proposing to do something a lot better than this, but this just gives you an example of what the city of Paso Robos is, is allowing. And is doing it successfully. With that, I just, I just want to say that, you know, our team here is fully committed to making this city maker project a reality. And are asking for the support of the planning commission and city staff to help make this project possible for everyone. We want the future of Atascadero to be bright and prosperous for all. This project will do exactly that. I thank you for your time and consideration of our request. And would be more than willing to help answer any questions that the commissioner city staff has at the moment. Thank you so much.
Thank you Ted. Finding commissions, we're going to, I'm going to open it up for you guys to ask questions of the applicant and then we'll invite the public to leave comments. Dennis?
Yeah, and I'll just list these for Ted and then you can respond as needed afterwards. One of the questions I have is was there, or is there a sunset clause in the allowable use agreement with Walmart? Two, you emphasized the DG road, so, or DG pass. So I'm assuming that in the temporary use, then you would be providing DG surfaces as a temporary surface, asking that question. Right now there are several lot lines on the property. Is it the intention to adjust those lines or merge those lines? Is there any intention of having uses, let's say the retail condo areas on individual lots? And then would there be any chance of portions being sold off the entire project at some point? Then lastly, just a couple of comments more than anything else. I have your sound engineer look at the lake park and the sound stage, the stage we have there. I live at the other end of Santa Rosa Road during concert series during the summer. I can clearly hear the music and the singing and the words of that facility. And I'm there at one end and I'm at the other end. So that's something not to do is what the city allows there. I'm a little bit confused about city of Paso Robos and Tobin James. I think that is in this county of Paso Robos. And I was wondering, do they charge for use to park vehicles there overnight? And then just a couple crazy things. Number four in your last bullet point thing, you have comply, compile versus comply and number four. And then lastly, because I'm a wannabe Italian, I lived in Italy for five, six years. And one of the first things I did when I went there is I asked them about bocce courts. And they didn't know what I was talking about. Bocce courts. And so I explained to them with my broken Italian at that time, what I was talking about. And they said, oh, you mean bocce. And so bocce is not it, it's bocce. Anyway, thank you.
All right. Any other questions for the?
But can, do you mind if I answer those first? Just so I don't?
Go ahead.
Yeah, yeah. And you're so right Dennis, it is bocce. You're, you're 100%. My wife is a battaglia and we play bocce every time I go to their parents' house, her parents' house. So I stand corrected. Thank you for that. I want to go back to the sunset clause or question. Currently what it is, is we have, what was it like 90 days to close escrow on this thing? And so we've already, we've already, we've already gotten one extension. And it doesn't look like they're going to give us one more at this point. So hopefully that kind of asks for answers the question there. It's, it's a 90-day escrow period at which, you know, we've got one extension already. Uh, going back to the DG road question, really, um, you know, whatever road substrate we use. It's going to need to meet the fire, you know, fire and emergency service requirements as far as compaction. And so, you know, unfortunately I'm not an engineer, so I don't know what, what the exact technical type, road type is. But it will have to meet, whatever we end up doing, it's going to have to meet the emergency services requirements. That's for sure. Moving on to your question about the existing property and lots. So ideally we will be doing a, a final map and a condo map. And so for us, remember we do a project, we always want to design in the most flexibility as possible. Because you never know what happens with markets. Markets change over time. The more flexibility we have, it allows us to be successful in kind of any market, if you will. And the condos over the retail portion of the project, we see that as being an air map, condo map as well. And that those could be sold in the future. You know, for us, we like ownership. We're not, we're not big on, we're not big on rentals. So we think, we see that as a great opportunity for people in the future, you know, residents of Atascadero. And then the sound stage component, I think something that I wanted to address about the sound. Is the fact that we're very fortunate that this site already has a large natural topography. That basically pushes that any sound that would be projected out would hit, would hit this hillside. And then bounce back towards Highway 101. So that way, you know, it wouldn't, hopefully the idea is it wouldn't transfer into the surrounding Del Rio neighborhoods. But actually that the sound would bounce back towards the Highway 101, you know, freeway. And then the other commercial areas like the hotel, the Mission Oaks Shopping Plaza.
One of the reasons why I asked about the lot lines is sometimes it's beneficial for financing to be able to have parcels that you could leverage. Versus the entire parcel being leveraged. And so that's the reason why I was asking that question, but thank you Ted very much.
Sure.
Okay, Jason?
Yeah, with the, with the condo leases and leasing the retail spaces and the restaurant spaces. Are those all going to be run by you or are you going to be renting them out to individual business owners?
Sorry, I'm trying to unmute. So. Uh, sorry, I'm trying to mute. Uh, so, so what we see is that initially, yes, the condos would, would be, would be leased. Um, and the reason is that those condos help provide the economic or drive the economics for the building. And so by doing so, it allows us to, you know, see that the retail spaces, um, you know, we, we could, we don't have to necessarily have market rate rent day one. So ideally we want businesses, small businesses, local businesses to come in and grow roots, right? And work with the businesses and grow, you know, get closer to that market rate over time instead of day one. And yes, uh, currently, uh, we would be the ones operating or owning, owning, and you know, I guess effectively the landlords of those buildings, you know, until it made sense to, to sell. Um, the good news is my partner Jenny, Jenny Kim, uh, she manages a large commercial real estate portfolio of shopping centers and apartments and does a very good job of property management. And so she would be the one responsible for that portion of the project.
Okay, another question. Um, do you guys have any preference towards, um, local business owners renting and operating the, uh, the retail spaces as opposed to large outside area businesses?
Uh, yes. So I know currently Jenny, she is the one responsible for doing, you know, reaching out and attracting the tenants. Um, she's already working with a half a dozen local businesses. And the idea is to focus on local businesses, uh, as opposed to, you know, big, you know, big chain, commercial retailers. And so, uh, I, I hope that Jenny, do you want to add anything?
Yeah, we're focusing on, uh, local operators in near cities and not, um, planning of any national brand store. So it will be definitely supportive for, uh, local branches that are wanting to expand.
Yeah, I wish we could share who, who she's talked to because you, you know who they are. And I think you, I think you'd really enjoy them.
Yes.
I just, I just think it's, it's a very unique project, a very, um, ambitious project. And it'd be really nice to see people coming up from San Luis Obispo to Atascadero. To, you know, see how beautiful our city is and spend some money here.
That's the goal.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other finding commissioners want to ask the applicant any questions? Victoria?
Yeah, uh, well, thank you for the presentation. I, I'm very excited to see this project overall. I know that, um, when we were talking about the interim use, I was curious about, you know, the pop-up vendors, you know, all the sanitation and bathroom stations and all that. I get the, and I can understand the need to want to do that to attract and get community buy-in basically before a lot of the lots like residential is put in and things like that and start gauging interest. Um, and I guess my question is as far as jobs, because this summer, things would start really moving on the property, mostly off to be able to then build. But, um, what is the job prospects look like for the interim items that you're putting in potentially?
Yeah, so that's a really good question. Uh, recently I think there has been some challenges with, with finding employees to, to, uh, you know, support businesses. Uh, that, that is a real concern. Um, I think the good news is that we have some very, very good relationships uh, locally that, you know, we have a really good tie into the local labor force, uh, if you will, just through certain families, certain local families. And, you know, a lot of the type of labor, a lot of the labor pool, you know, comes from Paso Robles and, and out of, um, Santa Maria, especially for the construction aspects of the project. And so we have great relationships there. We also have really, uh, good relationships through the different businesses that are owned locally. So we already kind of have a network of, of employees who are, there are, there are people looking for work. It's just, you know, really what we're seeing is they want flexible work. And so as long as we can provide some flexibility, we start to attract more, uh, more employees who, who want to work. And so.
Yeah. And what about you? I don't know if you mentioned, because you mentioned construction. But what about landscaping and tree maintenance groups? Is there anybody in Atascadero? You don't have to name names, but.
Uh, the, the answer is yes. Uh, you know, one of the contractors we work with is local to Atascadero. Uh, and, um, so is some of the labor we have now, they, they do live in Atascadero. And they do landscaping in Atascadero. So, um, yes.
Yeah. And then I had kind of a one-off question about the, um, was it a ethics or a marketing decision or both around organic? There was a organic juice bar, which seems appropriate. But I was, I was, um, just surprised about the organic winery, like why, why organic winery?
Yeah, so, um, we are currently in the process of development. That's actually a, that's something that we are pursuing as a business. Uh, we have, uh, we have a winemaker, a very, uh, accomplished winemaker out of the Napa Valley who, um, who manages six very large Napa, uh, wineries. He's got one in Texas, Argentina, and, uh, one of the most successful ones in Colorado. And really, um, we have a concept for organic winery or wine making uh, that we see a large wine production facility going in Del Rio in one of the 8,000 square foot retail facilities. We're actually reserving it right now. We're working, we've already acquired a large portion of grapes. The brand is ready to launch at the end of this year. So hopefully that answers, that answers your question.
Okay, interesting.
Yeah.
Um, yeah. And then just lastly, I wasn't sure, um, you probably heard my question earlier to city staff around bike lanes. And I guess moving inward to the project site and looking at circulation. I mean, I didn't really see much around encouraging bike transit all around. I mean, I wouldn't want to leave if I was here for a week. There's no need to go anywhere else. I don't think I would be walking everywhere with the topography. So could you speak a little to that?
Yeah, absolutely. Um, unfortunately in kind of this, you know, latest revision, uh, we didn't include, but we had, was it like a, a one?
1.25.
A 1.25 mile, um, walking path that circulated through the entire site. It just hadn't translated through, uh, here yet, because, you know, we did all the engineering. It's one of those things that'll, that'll come back once we've kind of set most of the programming. Otherwise, everything's just going to keep moving around. But the idea is absolutely, uh, we want to, we want to provide a, a full trail that encompasses the entire property. And then we even, you know, we have ideas about, uh, renting out electric bikes and those sorts of things. We see opportunities with, with the Slenus Riverbed for horseback riding. You know, there, there are other programming elements that we haven't shared that we are thinking about. You know, we actually have a list of about a hundred programming items. And we've had, we've had to narrow it down to like 20. It's been tough. But biking, pedestrian friendly, at one point we wanted horses to ride around the, the property. I think we realized after much deliberation that it's hard to corral many horses at once. Just do, yeah, and personality and not, not everybody gets along. So, so anyways, um, yes, pedestrian friendly, yes, bike friendly. And yes, we do want to have a, a walking path, hiking path, biking path that circulates and encompasses the whole property.
Okay, yeah. And just getting back to that exterior bike lanes I was talking about on Del Rio Road. I mean, there is that one school that was mentioned, San Benito, but also I could see people that are moving into Del Rio Ranch potentially that are residents, you know, they would use that corridor, Del Rio to get to even Atascadero Middle School and even into the downtown and skip the El Camino side. So I guess it just, I'm concerned about the road condition as it is and just what, what your project would do to support that infrastructure and use.
Yes. So basically to my knowledge and understanding, we're responsible for the improvements along our frontage, right? So that's basically the corner of, of Del Rio, all the way down to, I guess, the intersection of the private Rio Rita Road. Um, so if anything past that, uh, I don't think we've currently been asked to, to improve. Um, I, I think it's wonderful if we could get a bike lane that, you know, wraps around all of Atascadero in a big circle. That'd be ideal. Um, you know, especially knowing that there are some bike opportunities. I think coming from the Templeton area, maybe down towards Tascadero, I think it'd be, I think it's wonderful. Uh, I, I ride my bike to work. You can ask my, my, my colleagues here. They worry about me every time I do it, but I have, I enjoy doing it. Yeah.
Well, thank you.
Sure.
Tori, did you have any questions with the applicant?
I don't think so. I think all my questions got answered already.
Okay, thank you. Ted, I'm, I'm, as you know, I was on the DRC and we didn't see this preliminary, um, work at the DRC. I was just wondering if you could address why this didn't come up during the, the DRC review?
Yeah, Jeff, great question. I, I think maybe one was, it was, we, you know, you got to realize we're doing like a year's worth of work in three or four months. Right? So, you know, I think a lot of it had to do with timing of having a tentative map, having, you know, having it laid out where it was going to happen. I, I don't think the interim use was, was fully defined and identified at the time. However, we did ask for it. If you go back to the slides, you'll see on, I guess it's like slide 10, where it says temporary interim use, it, it's on there and I did, I did touch base. But I don't think, I, I probably didn't do a good enough job articulating it. And, you know, that, and that's, you know, my fault. I apologize for that.
Okay, thank you. Um, we're going to open this up. Oh, Jason, did you have one more comment?
Um, real quick, if, if you were given, um, some, uh, the ability to put this temporary use in and, uh, and funding did fall through for, for whatever reason, um, where, what would happen then?
Yeah. So I, I mean, what we'd have to do is discontinue the, the temporary use and probably sell, we'd have to sell the, the project, the property. Uh, that's not our, that's, that's not, I mean, that's something, that's not something that we ever want to see happen. I mean, I guess the reality is, is, is it could happen, but, um, for us, you know, this, this project is so important. You know, we, we feel very confident that we, we have the lender. Um, the good, I guess the good news is, uh, you know, our lender is on board. Um, I, I think the other thing to consider is that, um, is that it is very hard to finance projects right now. So, um, I don't see anything happening for a while unless you did have a kind of a national, you know, retailer or a very large kind of REIT-backed, uh, commercial development company come in. Otherwise, you know, I think banks are kind of upside down for the next 24 to 36 months. That's just the reality, you know, unfortunately it affects all of us. You know, uh, we are very fortunate that we even have a commercial lender, uh, who, who is interested in doing this. Because I can tell you, we have talked to at least, yeah, at least 20, at least 20 different banks. And out of 20 banks, we found two, two that are interested, one who's real willing to step up to the plate. And that, that is, that's been a full-time job for one of our other team members is to do that. You know, we've talked to all the local billionaires, you know, the guys who are no commercial real estate. We've tried to talk to them, we've tried to bring them in. This is a, this is a very challenging time because people still don't know what's going to happen 12 months from now. And so the part of the lender feeling comfortable is knowing, hey, you have, at least there's income that's coming in. As long as you guys get the income, and by the way, they, they looked at the RV asset class and it's up 600, 700% since the beginning of the pandemic. Why? People aren't getting on airplanes anymore. People aren't wanting to stay in hotel rooms anymore. Basically what people do is they buy their own hotel room on wheels and then they go where they want to go. The problem is there's just not a lot of sites available for that to happen. So you have all these people that bought RVs, but really have nowhere to go because all the other spots are, are booked up. I mean, most RV parks, they're 90% to full capacity.
Yeah, especially at high, high tourism rate, uh, times of the, of the year. Okay, so this interim, uh, uh, project that you'll be doing, you, you're expecting it to last up to 36 months, did you say, or?
No, no, we're, we're, we're hoping, I mean, six months would be great. I mean, I think 12 months is more realistic based on what it's going to take for, for our engineering and design teams to collaborate with the city to get permits approved. I mean, I'd, I'd love to say we can get permits tomorrow, but I think the reality is there's a process that we all kind of have to follow. And, you know, I think six months is really optimistic. I think 12 months is more realistic. And I think we all want to, we all want to see the permanent, we all want to see the permanent project, especially us, because we'll make many multiples in income and revenue off of the, the permanent project than we ever would the interim project. So there is a huge financial incentive for us to finish the project.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Thank you Ted. We're going to go and open it up for the, um, the public. If any members of the public would like to, um, make a comment, if they could please raise their hand on Zoom, or if you're on your phone, do star nine. And, uh, please state your name for the record and limit your comments to three minutes.
First, we have Jack Phelan.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, this is Mike Manchak, uh, for public comment.
Okay.
Um, so good evening, everyone. Um, I am Mike Manchak and I'm grateful to have this opportunity to speak on this project. As a North County resident for, for a couple of decades now, I'm really excited to be working with the Cal Coastal team. Um, it's a local company that's creating amenities and even affordable housing in Atascadero, which is really important right now and has been for, for quite some time. This company's projects have positive impacts that are helping to address some of the economic challenges that Atascadero continues to face. Some of you know that I was, uh, the lead on a countywide economic development organization that helped Atascadero's businesses and even the city itself, and we work very closely with city staff, all about creating a better economy. With my experience though, in, in helping the community, I believe I have a unique perspective on Atascadero's economy and ways in which to address these ongoing challenges that we all seem to be watching play out and within the, within the region. But what I did learn is this, what I learned about Atascadero's economy over the years is that it's a really all about helping the local businesses, growing the local economy so that we can be more sustainable and more resilient, more sustainable for the economic ups and downs and more resilient when things like COVID happens. But the one challenge that we seem to, to have and talk about within the city time and time again is this jobs, housing and balance. So in to addresses this jobs, housing and balance, it's really important that we talk about, you know, things like creating the job base, a larger job base of head of household jobs. And by that, we will diversify and grow the local economy. Um, these challenges cause many residents to not be able to work in the city that they live in. Uh, many of us know these people, um, and some even have to work very far distances because of the lack of jobs within the city limits. So we're, we're even losing residents, um, permanently because of this lack of higher wage jobs. It's something we can address and it's, it's completely possible. So creating more jobs in the community is really important for both the city and the, and that city itself as a government entity as well as the residents. Fewer high wage jobs means fewer taxes collected from spending. Thus fewer resources for community services paid by those taxes. So what's the solution? Well, in short, it's creating and attracting more business. It's more affordable workforce housing, much like one of the projects that the company is doing called Grand Oaks. And it's more community amenities like this project, Del Rio, which is a place where people want, like a community where people want to live in, they want to spend their money in, and they want to invest in and grow jobs. So just, just as a side note, approximately two years ago, we surveyed businesses both in and outside of the city. And the purpose was, it was working with city staff. We we interviewed business leaders and we asked that question, what's it going to take to grow your business here? And they all said the same thing, which was the city needs more entertainment options, more eating options, and more affordable housing for their employees. If we address these things, the 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 economy of Atascadero will really improve for the long haul and be more resilient and be more sustainable. Um, so kind of in closing here, we we need to maximize the city's competitiveness. There are far too many people, and I know it was mentioned on the, on the, by one of the members of the committee, that far too many people leave the city and spend their money in other cities, and in fact, even even other counties. We need to, we need to stop that by by way of creating more ways to spend their dollars in Atascadero instead of elsewhere. And I think these, this project does exactly that. Um, it really makes the 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 city of Atascadero and its economy far more competitive with other cities and even other counties by creating more entertainment or shopping, lodging. And again, this is for locals and visitors. That's really important. And then lastly, the the phase three, which is the housing up on top, again, we cannot, we just don't have enough workforce housing. We haven't for a long time. I know the city is helping to work on that, um, and this would help um address that problem. But I firmly believe that this is the type and quality of project that will help Atascadero be more competitive with other cities, counties, and also it'll serve the needs of the community, its visitors, as well as the businesses that are here, is really what I want to call a win-win-win. So thank you for allowing me to speak on this project. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other members of the uh public that would like to speak on this item? If you could please raise your hand in Zoom or if you're on the phone, star nine. Annette, should, do we need to read, read into the record the letter that we received from?
Yes, we have, can you hear me?
Yeah.
We have two letters I can read into the record. First one is from Brian Gordon Kennedy. And he said, I would like to learn more about how sound mitigation is being thought through for the proposed amphitheater and what the schedule of operation might be. As a resident whose property is a couple of blocks away from the proposed site, I am concerned that this may impact my right to quiet enjoyment. Given that noise pollution from sports events at Templeton High School already drifts to my neighborhood and that Templeton High School is more than one mile away, the potential negative impact of this amphitheater concerns me. The second comes from Scott Huffman, and he says, we own and manage the Mission Oaks Plaza Shopping Center directly across the street from this project. We have reviewed the proposed design concepts and would like to provide the following comments. One, calibration of the phasing will be essential to the success of the project, and we recommend the city mandate the amount of each product type that can be developed before other portions must commence construction. Resort versus residential versus commercial. We also suggest the city include a timeframe for when the parking garage would need to be constructed in any phasing matrix. We believe setting triggers for parking improvements will be important to the success of the project and ensures all components can be served effectively. Number two, based on the staff report, the applicant will install a signalized intersection aligning the RV resort access road with the Mission Oaks service driveway. We fully support this improvement and believe it will be essential for the proper functioning of the primary entrance to the RV resort. Number three, this ownership fully supports the adjustments to the residential district and changes to the circulation plan. We feel the proposed development provides a variety of destination uses that complement the existing neighborhood while providing new and exciting reasons to visit the area. Thanks, Scott J Huffman. And that's all we have.
Great, thank you. Any other, this is the last opportunity, if you'd like to, from the public, make a comment. This is your times, please raise your hand. Okay. Right, we have Wade Kelly on.
Hey, I just want to say, um, thanks for the great presentation, uh, very entertaining. Um, uh, you know, this is my first one, and uh, you know, I just had one question about the principal residential access road, uh, Obispo Road. Was, was that going to have a light on it or a stop sign or just continue as is? Uh, so that'd be the top left entrance?
Yeah, do you have any other questions, Mr. Kelly, then we can, we can.
Uh, that's it. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Kelly, do you want to answer that question?
Sure, um, currently, according to the traffic engineer, that intersection does not meet warrant for any sort of control. Um, so it would, there obviously would be stop signs on the Obispo roadside, but not along Del Rio.
Okay. Thank you. Any other participants that would like to make comment, this is your last chance. Okay. We'll close the public hearing portion of this meeting and bring it back to, bring it back to the planning commission. Dennis?
Uh, two things, please. Um, at the DRC meeting, we talked about noticing, I believe, to be within three hundred feet from the specific plan was, was that the, where the noticing uh was was based on?
Yes, we did three hundred feet buffer from the entire specific plan area.
So how many notices were sent out, do you know?
Annette, do you have that number?
I don't, but um it's on the T drive in the Excel file. I don't have the project file with me.
Three hundred, five hundred, one hundred?
Yeah, I can't answer that without the numbers in front of me, sorry.
It'd be interesting because we have two comments, uh, what I would perceive to be a large amount.
Um, I, if Mariah's listening, she might be able to get into the T-drive or track it and see.
At the very beginning of your presentation, you expressed some concerns over the temporary use. Could you explain what those um are?
Sure, um, so there's a couple of concerns. Uh, number one, our municipal code doesn't allow for temporary uses in this fashion, so. You know, it's something that we issue a building permit for. Um, there can be restrictions on the building permit that specifically relate to the timeframe that the use is allowed to be there. Um, but it is very hard to enforce that and and sort of force somebody to leave a site uh, once we've issued a building permit for something. Um, and our code just simply doesn't allow it for temporary uses. Um, I think you're allowed three consecutive weekends, no more than twelve days a year. And there's some site restoration associated with that. It's it's meant to be for things like the circus that comes through town once in a while or a Renaissance fair. Um, there's also a, just a citywide concern about potentially setting a precedent for other projects to say, here's my development plan, um, but I'm just going to use the site temporarily for this other thing uh for a period of time. Uh, so there's that concern too. We also haven't fully analyzed um traffic impacts of the temporary use. We imagine that the intersection at Mission Oaks would need to be um complete to a certain degree, maybe without signals, but certainly with the added turn lanes. Um, the traffic engineer, uh, usually there, it has said that usually there needs to be a pedestrian connection to sort of the closest stoplight from all of the roads to meet ADA compliance. Um, and we haven't looked at, you know, what side of minutes, uh, what minimum site utilities would need to be installed in order to properly provide emergency services to the site, uh, as well as wastewater um and things of that nature. So um, you know, we we just haven't had a chance to look at it. Um, there are concerns from a municipal code standpoint, and then um we just haven't analyzed it to see if we got beyond that point, what would indeed be required to establish that.
Just to, just to add to that, I mean, it would actually be something we would have to put into the Del Rio specific plan um and pencil it out. There's no um option in the specific plan for any interim use at this point. But I do want to add that the remaining components of this project are something that is um really great fit for the site. It's consistent with a specific plan. And if there's a way that they can phase this project to make it work for their financing, uh, so they can gradually move forward with the project, I think that is really what staff is wanting to support because we really want to support something happening with this property. I think we've heard a lot of good comments about it. But we just don't have a provision to accommodate an interim use. That that is an incredible challenge for us at the city. Um, now and in the future, it has been historically. But if the planning commission gets to a spot where they want to be able to entertain interim use on this property, they can suggest that the city council examine that uh so that this project can move forward. And then the city council can consider that, but there would be some additional work that would need to be done um in terms of just like Kelly's mentioning, conditioning the site and then accommodating it in our, either our zoning regulations citywide or accommodating it in the specific plan for this property as a specific component. But um it's something, yeah, that at this point, we we aren't able to, uh, as staff, um, stand behind that or endorse that use because it's just not there.
Victoria?
Well, and I know, Dennis, you might not be done. It just was directly related to piggyback off of what you were saying. I'm curious if the temporary use permit, how much are we talking that they would be spending on that versus foregoing that and having to just, I I don't know, I'm just, I'm just uh thinking about what if this precedent was actually moving us forward in a direction where we examine the permit costs and 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 that be something that we suggest the city look at, the council?
I'm back if I went away. I think what I wanted to say, though, is that the financing is extremely critical in every project. And it's something that many people in the public don't understand. They see that a project has been approved and suddenly it's the end of the world. Uh, but it's just the beginning for people who are proposing projects, and that is getting the financing and getting the money in place. And that is really, really critical. Obviously, the applicants are looking for something, I think, kind of twofold. One, to help them with financing, two, with also providing an introduction of the project to to the public. Uh, people come in, they can talk about it, those type of things. So I would encourage the commission to uh direct staff or direct, uh, out, direct the planning committee, the city council to request of the city council to try to find something that could uh help this out for these particular problems. And I don't think it's an issue that we should be concerned about precedent because it's, it's, it's real world for a lot of people who want to do projects. And uh, we have to consider that in our discussion. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else have any comments on this project? Tori?
Um, I I kind of agree. I think I would like to suggest to the city council that they look and see if there's a way um to do the temporary use or if there's some other solution to make sure that they get their funding because this is a really great project. I think it's really unique and important for Atascadero. And um, you know, I understand having to deal with municipal codes, but I think that we um as a city should try and make this work. So if there's something we can do within the code, and and I have no problem handing it off to the city council. This is why we elect them to those positions. They should do the work. Um, but I think that that's definitely um something I'd be willing to support is asking city council to, or staff to work with that and figure out a way to to make that happen.
Jason?
Uh, I have a question about, what he said earlier about uh this, the options to have us hand it off to city council or to make a decision now?
So, yeah, so the project, um, based on the nature of the approvals they're seeking, is going to planning commission for a final decision. So I think the staff report um did have a mention in there to refer it back to staff for additional information and then come back to planning commission for temporary use. Um, alternatively, you could just forward it to city council with some recommendations related to the temporary use. Um, and then we would move forward in that direction.
Yeah, because this, is this even a decision that, I mean, as a planning commission, we can't make that kind of decision for the?
Right, yeah, so all, all decisions about the project will be made at the city council level.
Yeah, we don't really have an option tonight on the temporary use, but at the same time, we don't want to hold up the entire project for the temporary use.
Yeah.
So I think it's valid to um for the commission to make a recommendation on it either way, but if you make a recommendation that you support the temporary use, it still won't be part of the project. Uh, it'll simply be a recommendation that the city council should ask staff to consider options to amend a specific plan to look at the temporary use, and then we'll have to come back again for that um to take action on that separately because we aren't prepared tonight to take action on it. We don't have the ability to take action. We had a discussion with our city attorney today on that very topic. Let's see if we have the ability to take action on it. And our city attorney um said that we don't because it's not a part of our code uh in terms of interim uses of that nature. And it's not part of the conditional use permit process and nor is it part of the specific plan. So we would have to do something with those particular um ordinances in order to be able to accommodate that. But still, you can recommend either way on that, and then we can continue working with the applicant um as you wish. And we can get there with or without a temporary use.
And I would like to note that we need at least four people to support a motion either way for it to be effective.
There's only five tonight, so thanks for pointing it out, Dennis. Um, yeah, so it's uh, and you could also separate that interim use issue out if you're having difficulty getting support for a motion.
I don't think that's, if there is.
Dennis, I I just wanted to go back to your question about how many people were noticed. It looks like we noticed about fifty property owners and eighty-five occupants.
Okay. Thank you. If there's interest, I'd like to make the motion if someone, uh, if there's no other comments.
Personally, just give my opinion. I would, I would like to see this project move ahead as expedited as possible and hand it off to council so that they can make that final decision, so we don't hold up, hold up the project. So any motion that supports that, I'd be in favor.
Thank you. So, uh, reading from the uh resolutions in our staff report, uh, it's uh states that we are recommending to the city council approval of the general plan amendments, the zoning map amendment, amendments to the Del Rio commercial area specific plan, a conditional use permit to establish a concept master plan of development, including approval of three conditionally allowed uses, those being RV resort, conference center, and mixed-use commercial buildings, and a height exception for the Del Rio Rents project. In addition, I would like to uh have hopefully full, full recommendation from the entire planning commission in support of the uh giving direction or giving the direction to the city council, recommending to the city council for them to uh work on trying to provide a temporary uh path to allow the applicant to have temporary uses as he has discussed with us.
Annette, is that clear enough?
Yes, it is.
Okay, do I have a second on that?
I'll second.
Jason, okay. Annette, can you do roll call on this?
Yes, Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Carranza?
Definitely.
Vice Chairperson Keen? Vice Chairperson Keen.
Yes.
Chairperson Van Nijckop.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, well, good luck to you, you all and staff. You have your work cut out for you to get something together.
You be safe.
Breathe in deep.
Only sad this is in Atascadero, so I won't get a chance to go glamping in Atascadero.
We could still do that, Tori.
I feel like that'd be a great girls weekend, like. Oh, we, yes, absolutely. We, just you and me. That way we're still following the rules.
Yeah, right. Can't have the majority of.
No, no boys allowed.
I was amused by the organic vineyards too because it's not the processing. In Italy, you get testa brute up. That's a headache because there's. We get it here in the United States because we have sulfur in our wines for preservative. In Europe, they don't put that in their wines and so you don't get headaches. And so that's organic for me.
I'll second that. Yeah, there's, sulfites really get me. Oh, my gosh, yeah.
Well, it's really interesting about that temporary use stuff because I know that this was a bigger, this, this is like a bigger conversation than just this site. Obviously, it's what is our ordinance structure, our fee structure? What is, what does all of that look like? I mean, I do, I do hear the staff, this is setting some kind of precedence. And I, and I think it's a good thing that we're looking at. Telling the council to look at options to adapt rather than just say, we're not doing it.
Exactly.
You're welcome, Phil.
Sorry, Phil, and I'm glad that it got brought up.
Job security, Phil. It's job security.
Thank you.
Do you have any count, your comments or reports on anything that's coming up that you guys are aware of that?
I'm sorry, I just want to interrupt one more time. It looks like Ted Lawton is raising and unraising his hand, like he wants to speak. Is there an opportunity for him to do that?
All right.
Well, we close the, the public comment though.
Yeah, hey, hey, I just, yes, absolutely right. I want to say thank you guys so much. And then Dennis, we are, we are producing what we call, this is proprietary, our no, 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 no wine. Which means no added sulfites, no added sugars, no added yeast. I mean, it'll, it'll be, what, what's that term? Headache free. Well, no, not, not headache free, but it'll be gluten free. The first gluten free wines.
Have you raised?
Yes, exactly. But I think that the idea is we don't, you know, no headaches, right? No, 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 no headaches. And just thanks so much for understanding and listening to us this evening. We will work diligently on figuring out a way to make this work. So thanks again. Enjoy your evening.
Interestingly, there's a commercial on television for, I think eyelash liner that is gluten free. So I'm trying to figure out how that is, but it makes good advertising.
Phil, Phil, are you ready for a director's report?
Yes, we do not have a hearing scheduled for you in two weeks. Don't have an item ready for that, but I'm sure that we'll have some items ready for you soon. Lots of stuff brewing, lots of stuff we're cooking up, all kinds of plans coming forward this summer. We definitely have a busy time with the city council. On a few matters coming up. So if you have any questions for me about development projects about around town or anything else happening, I'm happy to answer those, but. Nothing in our next agenda, so you can.
Bill, I heard that I saw. I saw an email that we're having a ribbon cutting at the plaza or whatever, what is that called?
That is right. There is no name for that plaza yet. So I hope at some point there'll be a naming contest for that plaza that's now built over what was Atascadero Mall. I just, I tend to call it a tasker or a plaza, but it's not been named yet. And it's just about finished. They're putting the final touches on landscaping right now. In a week or two, they'll, they'll put the lighting onto it. It's going to have some really neat lighting too. There'll be some uplights for the trees. There'll be some. String type lights that look like string lights that'll be underneath the pergola structure. And we're really also trying to find a really good tenant for. The location where the mechanic moved out. So I wanted to publicly announce that. If anybody knows anybody that would like to go in a spot with roll up doors, that's not a mechanic. That would be wonderful because we'd like a different kind of land use on that plaza. And then. There are tenants that are moving forward with La Plaza as well on the other side of that plaza. So that plaza is going to be a neat spot. We'll be. Soon. And it's kind of a preliminary ribbon cutting because it also later on, there'll be a, a bigger celebration. At that location in the summer or towards the end of summer, I think. So, yeah, it's a neat, a neat little project that's going to be a great adjunct to the larger part of the sort of El Camino downtown enhancement plan.
I'd make a suggestion for that, that garage. A open, closed door farmer's market.
Yeah, that's an aw, that's an awesome idea. There you go.
Yeah.
Like the Colony Market in Delhi. They were really creative with that old gas station. It looks awesome. That's such a cool place.
Going in and doing your shopping in a little market behind there, that'd be nice. All right.
Okay. Put up the money.
I have a question, Phil.
Yes.
It's around, uh, well, the one piece that Ted in his presentation said that they're not really addressing. And so it piqued my interest. I was like, well. What city property do we have in downtown that? Is there anything going on as far as mutterings or conversations around developing or pocket gardens that are just? Yeah, I'm just, I'm just curious. Could you speak to any of that, that point?
There, there are very few city properties. The only property that the city actually has downtown that's outside of City Hall and Sunken Gardens is the property that has the yellow structure on it. Adjacent to the parking lot downtown. And outside, that is right next to our Centennial Plaza and Bridge. Next to. Across.
Is that where the museum was?
Yeah, there's the, the history museum is still there. They've been there for a year now. So that's the one property that the city does own right around that Centennial Plaza. We're looking at options for that. In fact. At some point later this summer, we're going to have a study session on what to do with those properties. And how to best fit those properties into the downtown and, and make them productive. So that's one focus area. So that is a discussion. But there aren't other properties that, that the city has that we can do things with. They're all privately owned. The rest of the properties down.
There are things like rights of way that could be, I mean, the, I'm an advocate for piazzas behind the. Hotel and on the other side of the street between. Traffic and Entrada and, and East Mall, those alleyways behind those things, those are city properties.
Now that you mentioned that, that's a really good point because when I was thinking properties, I'm thinking vacant lots, but those alleyways, the alleyways behind. Dead Oak Brewery and the new pie shop there and the alleyway behind Streetside are these fantastic spaces that could. Be.
Really dead space.
Reinvented as a kind of a tasker or downtown funk zone and have things that front on them and.
Dead ends on traffic way now. You can't go through that because the island. You could close that off and put two business lots there and you could work through the parking area behind the old fire station. That's a city lot too.
Where do we put these conversations, Phil? Like besides they, some good chatter after a meeting.
That's a really good question. Where do we, so these, you know, it takes a conversation to make things happen. I can't.
Oh, I'm not saying I don't like it. I just don't want to like, oh, great. And then, you know, we're on to general planning time and a few months and then we just forget about it.
So as we, as we get into. Scoping out the general plan. And the planning commission will be very closely involved in that later this summer. These are the kind of things we bring up with the public. These are the kind of things we bring up with the city council. These are the kind of things we bring up with the consultant that we hire to develop our general plan. So that they end up as policy, so that they end up as city council direction. There's two opportunities. One is when we create policy, the other is when we do our strategic plan. As we do every couple of years and, and get, getting these things into the strategic plan and getting these seeds planted for these great ideas. And. So anytime we have a discussion like this, I also take notes on these topics and sometimes they end up in the minutes as well. So. It's valuable to have these discussions and kind of bring up these ideas about what the community is thinking and what. We're thinking should be, you know, good future projects because certainly our downtown is a priority. And if you look at our current strategic plan right now, there is a number of things that are already in there for our downtown for reinvigorating spaces. The big one, of course, is the downtown enhancement plan, which includes the angled parking in the center of El Camino and landscaping around that. And slowing down the traffic, which again, in turn will create a whole nother. Host of creating these spaces downtown that are more walkable, more attractive, more place making. That'll tie everything together. It'll be the glue. But then we can do more with that, such as looking at the alleyways, looking at the, you know, things like Centennial Plaza. And the vacant lots around that plaza and figuring out how to activate those spaces.
Sunken Gardens. There used to be a gas station in front of Sunken Gardens in El Camino Row a long time ago.
In, in Sunken Gardens. Yeah, it was right on the park. Yeah.
I think that we could, I, we have to decide who we want Sunken Gardens for, but I think we can enhance Sunken Gardens by. Putting two buildings, commercial, not commercials, of city buildings along the side. And we could use that to frame City Hall. They, they big picture frame. It looked gorgeous. And we could put a, I thought about putting a piazza out front that would have plumbing inside of it. And it, you just have to be persistent. I have my ideas on piazzas. Go back twenty-five years. And I've been talking to people at the city for twenty-five years about making piazzas in these areas.
And so you know, Dennis, just so you know, I actually designed the Sunken Garden, so I would not support that.
I was gonna say, ooh, we have one key player in the midst here.
Well, I would still be this Sunken Gardens, but I would just have a kind of half of it. The front half would be. Kind of a, an area that would be used for traveling exhibits. For a library, for a police station, whatever, something that we could use the frame and picture frame around City Hall.
What I, what I will add to this conversation is that, is the, it's the first time in many years that there's been multiple properties available around Sunken Gardens. So. The Century Twenty-One building is for sale. There's a blue building. It's currently a dentist office. It's on. West Mall that's currently for sale. There's another building that's for lease. There's other buildings such as. Some of the other locations that I can't really name because they're not on the market, but that softly those people are willing to sell. There's the vacant properties around Centennial Plaza. So it's an amazing time for opportunity right now, without even looking at the park, but the properties that surround that park. Now more than ever have, are available. And so. Lorelei, our economic development director and myself are really working on trying to find people. Who might want to invest in that area for the future, so.
And she's on the call right now. Lorelei's on the call.
She, she is there. She can even chime, she can even chime in right now.
Hey.
Let her, let her, let her, let her speak, Mariah, because she's part of our group.
And if you haven't seen her face, maybe she wants to turn her video on.
I don't know if she can do that.
But I won't make her.
I think I saw her last, was she at that meeting you were asked a couple of days ago when I saw you? Is that Lorelei with you?
Hi, can you hear me?
Oh, there she is.
Hi, everybody. It's a pleasure to virtually meet you all.
You too.
Great. I'll turn on my camera so I can formally introduce myself. Hi, everybody.
Thank you.
Enjoying the, the great conversation presentation. Yeah, it's not, it's not a fake background. It's a real one. Thank you. No, I, I look forward to working with all of you. And yes, anybody who's listening who's excited for some opportunity, there's. Great opportunities for investment in Atascadero right now as, as a homegrown resident. It's so exciting to see so much possibility. I mean, everything could really blossom and, and take on a new life and be hustling and bustling. You know, within a matter of months, as soon as, you know, La Plaza ribbon is cut. I mean, there's a lot of opportunity or. You know, it could absolutely stay the same and it's really a matter of someone stepping up and saying, I'd love to be part of the change. So. We look forward to working with you all and that's what I'm here for and just give me a call and I can put my, maybe someone could put my information in the chat if it's in there. We can connect.
Well, thank you.
Thank you very much.
That was a perfect introduction. What a great opportunity. Unplanned, but it was perfect. Thank you, Lorelei.
Thank you for having me.
She was listening to us.
Yes.
The one thing I asked Phil when I was thinking about the commission and public servency, I was like, what, what do we do? Like besides show up to these meetings, like do our research, ask good questions, like. Outside of, he's like economic, you know, development, like I need some support, getting the word out to the community. Trying to recruit, seeing what fits where, you know, talk it up. You're spokespeople.
Yes, and Lorelei is our biggest advocate for that. So you should talk to, you should, you should speak. To Lorelei, Victoria, so.
Great.
That would be a great, a great option.
All right, well. I'm going to go back to my vacation. Thank you, Jeff.
Oh, yeah, you're with mom.
I'm in Idaho right now.
Yeah.
Be safe going to Texas.
Yeah, Texas in two, two weeks, so. Actually, we're flying.
Oh, okay, good.
Yeah.
That's a little later where you're at, so sorry we kept you up so late.
Well, thank you, everybody. We'll go ahead and close our meeting and look forward to seeing you at our next scheduled meeting.
Thank you.